... this time and give our invocation also lives in the place of flag, so would everyone, please rise.
Good evening. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you so much for this day, Lord God, and we thank you for just the opportunity we have to come before you in prayer. We ask that you establish your presence in here this evening, Lord God, and we ask that there be a presence of peace and a presence of order. And we thank you, Lord God, for the mayor and the distinguished members of the council, Lord God, and we ask and we pray for special prayer and abundant blessing of wisdom and order in this house tonight, Lord God. We thank you for it all, and we ask that you continue to bless and watch over this great city of Smyrna. In your son, Jesus' name, we pray. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, and that's International Gospel Outreach Churches at the intersection of Wendy Hill and Dixie. They've been here, I guess, about 10 or 15, 20 years now. Great asset to our community, so folks who want a new church or want to change, just go by, I'm sure they'd be glad to have you. We've got some ladies here. Oh, I'm sorry, agenda changes, let me do that first. Foray, that item, which is a public hearing zoning request for a piece of property down on Riverview Road in Nichols Drive, that will be tabled till the meeting of the 18th, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct, sir.
When we get to that issue. We've got a proclamation and recognize some Veterans Day poppy weekend. Mr. Welch, have you got that?
I do, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Young ladies that are up here, if y'all come forward, and then Corky's going to read the proclamation, give it to you, and then you can donate your poppies, and we know what to do. I'm going to let you introduce yourselves, as you would, please.
Okay. I'm June Burgess. This is Barbara Haslett, and we're from the American Legion Post 160 Auxiliary.
Thank you both for coming this evening. A proclamation by the mayor of the city of Smyrna for the Veterans Day Poppy Weekend, whereas America is the land of freedom preserved and protected willingly and freely by citizens, soldiers, and whereas millions who have answered the call to arms have died in the field of battle, and whereas a nation at peace must be reminded of the price of war and the debt owed to those who have died in war, and whereas the red poppy has been designated as a symbol of sacrifice of lives in all wars, and whereas the American Legion Auxiliary has pledged to remind America annually of this debt through the distribution of the memorial flower. Now therefore, I, A. Max Bacon, mayor of the city of Smyrna, do hereby proclaim November 9th through 11th, 2013, as poppy weekend, and ask that all citizens pay tribute to those who have made the ultimate sacrifice in the name of freedom by wearing the memorial poppy. In witness whereof, I have here and to set my hand and cause the seal, the city of Smyrna, to be affixed upon this the fourth day of November in the year of the Lord, 2013. And I think y'all want to distribute. You want to tell us a little bit about, y'all do it this every year, and we're always glad to have you.
Yeah, we'd like to say thank you, Mr. Mayor, and to the council for having us here this evening. We will be at Kroger on South Com Dr. in Smyrna and Kroger South Atlanta Road and the Walmart at East West Connector on Saturday and Sunday, and then we will be at the memorial service for the city of Smyrna at 11:00 on Monday distributing, so stop on out and help us out. Thank you.
Thank y'all for all that y'all do. This is an annual event, and I remember one time all I had was a 20. I had followed that. Yes. Thank y'all very much. These are just donations, so y'all might as well get your hand in your pocket out there. They're going to come out there. Wade, do you want to say something? The Veterans Day event for downtown is...
Yes, Your Honor, while these ladies are distributing poppies to those who wish to purchase them, there will be a ceremony at the Veterans Memorial in downtown Smyrna next Monday, November 11th, at 11:00 a.m., the 11th day of the 11th month, at the 11th hour, commemorating all of our veterans. The keynote speaker is Major General Tom Wessels. We've got Campbell High School junior ROTC cadets participating. We've got the hunter guard from the 94th Air Lift Wing. It'll be a typical outstanding Smyrna ceremony. The public's invited to attend. In case of inclement weather, we will move into the community center. So same kind of schedule as on Memorial Day, except the Veterans Day ceremony will be 11:00 a.m. Monday, November 11th. In inclement weather, 11:00 a.m., the community center. It's co-sponsored by Smyrna American Legion Post 160, the Veterans Memorial Association of Smyrna, and the city. Thank you.
Thank y'all very much. Item A on the mayor's report was to recognize Doris Mukunte, no, Mukunku. She is the development coordinator for Books for Africa, which is located on Atlanta Road, just right outside our city limits, but they're having a gala on November the 9th, 2013. They are the largest supplier and shipper of donated books to Africa. And if you, I was really amazed when I went down there for a visit. Like I said, they're right outside, they're right inside the perimeter, but a great nonprofit organization. For more information, you can Google Books for Africa. It's their 25th anniversary this year, so. All right. Nothing else, let's see, we'll go into the regular portion of the agenda. Item four is land issues, zonings, and annexations. A is Z-13-015, Public Hearing Zoning Request, Z-13-015, rezoning from PVC Cobb County to MU Conditional Smyrna, 81.95 acre tract, land lots 58, 171, 172, 174, 175, and 284 of the 18th District of Cobb County, Riverview Road, and Nichols Drive, Jamestown LP. This is a public, well, I'll get Mr. Taylor to read the background, since this is a public hearing, just in case there's someone here that's for, is here for that. Mr. Taylor?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Jamestown Partner, Limited Partners, they're seeking approval to annex and rezone approximately 82 acres along Riverview Road and Nichols Drive from Planned Village Community to mixed-use conditional. The Planned Village Community, that was the Cobb County designation, they want to develop a mixed-use community called River Landing. This development will include 155 single units, 850 apartment units, 200 senior units, 332 townhome units, 165 condominium units, and 190,000 square feet of retail space.
Before, I failed to mention that Ms. Pritchett is out sick today. She's got a little temperature, so hope she's all right. She will not be here tonight. Mr. Fennel, who represents this district, before we do that, I want to make sure, is there anybody here for that issue specifically that might want to make any public comment? Because if not, I want to ask for that. But we are going to hear it on the 18th, is that correct? All right, Mr. Fennel.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. November 18th, we'll have the public hearing. At that time, the staff will offer up what the PNZ recommendation and the staff's recommendation, and give a little bit of history at that point as to how we got here. But just for those who are interested, it's been a four-year process for the assemblage of what I understand to be about 25 tracts of land that aggregate to almost 82 acres down on the southern portion of Smyrna. It has a 3,500-feet frontage on the Chattahoochee River. So Smyrna will soon not just touch the river tangentially, but we will in fact have a fairly substantial frontage on the river, should this annexation be approved by the council on the 18th. I will say that I have been working with our able staff over the last three months or so. The application process with the county to change the zoning to allow for the project actually to be possible was a lot of hard work by the county officials, working with a lot of different pieces and parts, and have come to a plan with a set of stipulations that when, at the end of the day, the developer chose to request annexation into the city rather than complete the process with the county, we merely have asked that most of those stipulations, of course, rewarded to meet our specifications, but most of the hard work that had been done would be carried over. I will say that one of the requests I had early on in the process was that we give the public a chance to hear all aspects of this process and all aspects of this project before it was finally addressed by council. We have most recently resolved our biggest challenge, in my estimation, and that was the floodplain and the access to the road with our public safety component, and I believe we have crafted a solution that everybody's in agreement with, and we'll talk more about that in a couple of weeks. But I did want to let the public know that I have requested this two-week delay from tonight in order for us to meet that obligation I made early to have the public hear about this in a town hall meeting before we got to the process of a vote here at council. To that end, I have four opportunities between now and when we pass or consider this legislation. This Thursday at lunch is the Smyrna Community Center's Smyrna Business Association Monthly Luncheon. The program will be about this project. I've invited Walter Brown from the development team to come present what this project means, its details. He'll have charts and a PowerPoint presentation, and he'll stand to answer questions that the community might have. The following morning, at the Smyrna Optimist Club, we are also the program, so we're going to be up bright and early at 7:00 with some of the city leaders there at the American Legion Hall, where we will go through the same process and answer questions. The following Thursday, November 14th, I am holding a town hall meeting in Ward 7 at 7:30 p.m. It's November 14th, 7:30 p.m., and that will be at Whitfield Academy, which is in Ward 7. Off, for those of you who have been down there, you know where it is, but for those who in Smyrna that may want to come hear this presentation, can't make the luncheon or the breakfast meeting, want to come in the evening, Whitfield Academy, you can just Google Whitfield. Whitfield has an E in it. Whitefield is how it looks on paper, so whitfield.org. But take a look, it is on the south side of Smyrna, and we will be meeting in the Founder's Hall in the gathering room, the Barnett Gathering Room. There'll be adequate signage to direct you. But that meeting will serve as an opportunity for residents of Smyrna, particularly Ward 7, but all residents of Smyrna, to come take a look at the plans, to see the PowerPoint presentation, to ask the questions that you feel need to be asked prior to council, considering it at our public hearing, which will be our fourth opportunity to talk about it, and that is two weeks from tonight, November 18th, here in this very room. So, Mr. Mayor, with all that having been said, I move to table Z-13-015 to November 18th.
Second. I motion to second table till November 18th. All those in favor of the motion, please vote. Thank you very much. Item five is previous licenses. We have none. Item six, formal business. A is AGR 2013-04, authorize the mayor to sign and execute a construction agreement with CSX Railroad for maintenance and repairs to the Spring Road Bridge over the CSX Railroad. Mr. Taylor, the background.
Mr. Mayor, we're, the city is about to embark on some repairs to the Spring Road Bridge. These repairs include painting of the I-beams underneath roadway deck, cleaning and resailing of the expansion joints of the deck, and also guardrail repairs. Since this bridge goes over the railroad, we are required to enter into a construction agreement with CSX in order to have access to their, to their land. So Public Works and Corps of Engineering, our program manager, have reviewed this, and staff does recommend approval.
Mr. Corky Welch.
Mr. Mayor, I believe this is actually the approval of the railroad permit and the construction, and at this time, I'd like to make a recommendation that we approve AGR 2013-04 to authorize the mayor to sign and execute the construction agreement with CSX Railroad for the maintenance and repairs to the Spring Road Bridge over CSX Railroad.
I motion in a second to approve this construction agreement. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion. Approved 6-0. Item eight is a consent agenda. Mr. Taylor, will you please read the consent agenda for council's approval?
We have eight items on the consent agenda this evening. Item A is an approval of the October 21st, 2013 mayor and council meeting minutes. Item B is an approval of the city's wellness program renewal with Community Health Network, and authorize the mayor to execute any related documents. Item C is an approval of the revised business associate agreement with Marsh and McLennan Agency, and authorize the mayor to execute any related documents. Item D is an approval of the 2014 employee insurance providers and plans to Blue Cross Blue Shield of Georgia and Guardian, and authorize the mayor to execute all related documents. Item E is an approval of revisions to holiday and annual leave policies, and authorize the mayor to execute related documents. Item F is award, the community center painting bid to the lowest vendor, ICS Incorporated, for $26,900, and authorize the mayor to execute any related documents. Item G is to award RFP 14-007, street sweeping to the lowest bidder, Sweeping Corporation of America, in the amount of $32,572, and authorize the mayor to execute any related documents. And item H is to approve extended work hours and road closures for Smyrna Market Village Homeowners Association for the following Sundays, November 17th, November 24th, December 1st, December 8th, and December 15th.
Your motion, we approve the consent agenda.
I'd actually like to make a motion to first remove item D from the agenda. I am, just for the, for the first person, here's the background. I'm recusing myself from voting on item D specifically. My husband has a fiduciary interest in Blue Cross Blue Shield of Georgia, so I am recusing myself from that vote. So I request that we, and we'd like to move to remove item D from the agenda, and then I will make a motion to, if that passes, I'll make a motion.
Can we do this? Can we just approve items A, B, C, E, F, G, and H? Let's do that. Let's get a motion.
That works for me.
And then, so who made the motion?
I did, so.
You made the original motion?
There hadn't been one made. She's made the only motion that's on the table now.
Well, I don't want it removed from the agenda.
No, no, there hadn't been a motion made.
No. Okay, then, yeah, I move to approve the consent agenda items A, B, C, E, F, G, and H.
A motion in a second.
May take Terry a minute.
Okay. All those in favor of the motion, please vote. That is approved 6-0. To hear entertaining motion to approve consent agenda item D.
So moved.
The motion in a second, all those in, a motion in a second, all those in favor of the motion.
Yeah, I think the clerk, the clerk's got to reload the screen here.
All right, so we're making a motion to approve item D on the consent agenda. It's approved 5-0. We showed, Ms. Nolwich was not in the room.
Right, and she recused herself, yeah.
Okay, she recused, okay. All right, she can step back in or somebody. All right, item nine is committee reports. We'll start tonight with, start tonight with Ms. Andrea Bluestein. Ms. Bluestein?
Yeah, we're starting with you tonight. Committee reports.
I was so busy wondering where Terry was. I have really no formal committee report tonight, however, I would like to tell you that if you're off Monday and have the time, please join us for the Veterans Day Ceremony. I think it, I think we'd love to have a nice turnout, 11:00, and it'll be at the War Memorial, unless it's raining, in which case it'll be in the community center. So hope to see you there. Thank you.
Ms. Terry Nolwich.
Thank you, sir. I do have a couple of quick announcements. One is that the Village to Village 5, I'm sorry, 5, that's underambitious, the Village to Village 11K is taking place this Saturday morning, I'm sorry, Saturday the 16th. It is an out-and-back 5K. It's been, you know, the street, the reason I mention it is not because it's a city event, it's not, but it's, it's being done with the support of the city in terms of road closures. There will be a lane closed on Atlanta Road. The race begins at 7:00 a.m. It will be done, I would imagine, by around 9:00 a.m., but it is, if you're interested, it's the Village to Village 11K. It's an out-and-back course. It's a fantastic course for a long run, because it's along Atlanta Road from the Smyrna Market Village to the West Village, so it's completely, more or less, as Atlanta races go, it's about as flat as you're going to get for that distance. It's a phenomenal course for getting a longer distance than than a 5K or a 10K. And that is November 16th, and again, that starts at 7:00 a.m., so be on the lookout for runners. And speaking of pedestrians, the time change, daylight savings time, and going back to daylight standards time, those are the most dangerous times to be a pedestrian. This time of year, it's dangerous in the evenings, because people aren't used to driving home in the dark, and obviously, in the spring, it's dangerous in the mornings, because people aren't used to driving to work in the dark. But please be extra mindful of pedestrians, because there are a lot of pedestrians in this area, and it would be a shame if anyone happened to be hit. And with that, I yield.
Mr. Corky Welch.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As all of you have seen, we've made some substantial progress on Concord Road. Mr. Scott Stokes has made contact with me early last week and asked me to make an announcement. Beginning November the 11th, the contractor has made a request to him to extend his working hours from 7:00 in the morning until 5:00 in the afternoon. And this is going to be, just for the week of the 11th. This is going to be a bit of an inconvenience for a lot of us, me included, but what they need to do is to go in, they've installed the curbing now, and they need to do some leveling on the north side of the road, removing of some paving and so forth, and do the leveling course in there with some base material and some asphalt. So we're going to ask everybody to be a little patient with us for a week, find some alternate routes possibly, but just be aware that, that they are going to be extending those, those working hours from the 11th through the 15th, and make, make provisions to give yourself some extra time to get to work and so forth. With that, Mr. Mayor, I yield.
Ms. Susan Wilkinson.
I don't have any committee reports tonight. Thank you.
Mr. Wade Lenika.
Thank you, Your Honor. I just want to thank the residents in the Vintage Square neighborhood and the Collier Gate neighborhood for inviting me, and in the case of Vintage Square, Eric Randall, our city engineer, to meet with them and help them understand some issues and talk about what's going on in the city. It's always good to, you know, get in front of the residents and give them some updates and answer questions. It's been mentioned before, I'll just restate again, Memorial Day Ceremony, Monday, November 11th, 11:00 a.m. at the Veterans Memorial, in case of inclement weather, at the community center, November 11th, 11:00 a.m. I'd also just like to throw out to any veterans in the audience that these ceremonies are organized and planned and put on not only by city staff, which is instrumental to being successful in that endeavor, and I appreciate the support of the council and the staff in that, but by local veterans who dedicate their time to meet every month and organize and plan and provide resources and solicit businesses for support and find and vet speakers and do all the work that's necessary to, to make this ceremony one that we'd all be proud of. And so if you're a veteran in the audience and would be interested in, you know, being involved, we meet roughly once a month through the year, take Christmas off, but it's a good group of people to be around, it's a worthy cause to be involved in. If you're interested, talk to me. You can call me at home, or you can reach me through the receptionist here at City Hall. They can get in touch with me, I can call you. Love to sit down and chat with you and answer your questions and talk to you about me becoming involved with the Smyrna Veterans Committee. With that, I yield, Your Honor.
Mr. Ron Fennel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, from the police department, I want to commend our team, both the uniformed officers, the chief, and the detectives, who have bird dogged this case of the homicide that we might have heard about at Doc's. It was a squabble at a, at a bar that resulted in a very tragic outcome. A couple people died. The victim apparently was able to take out one of the offenders, and today, this afternoon, the police have apprehended three perpetrators, and congrats to the team for getting those people off the street who've been involved in this incident. And the DUI task force continues to do a great job keeping our streets safe on the weekends, and for all of those dedicated personnel, I appreciate it. Georgia State Patrol is to be commended too, with the additional force that they have along the 75 corridor. When they're not patrolling up and down the corridor, they do slide into Smyrna and patrol our streets and help do some enforcement as well. It's made a huge difference, and we're greatly appreciative of that. An update quickly on the Fire Chief Search Committee. Our committee meets tomorrow afternoon. We had 50 applicants for the posting. 14 were, the group narrowed down. Eight came back from our group, our professional certification and screening group, and we'll evaluate that group tomorrow to get it down to a smaller, more manageable list for the personal interviews. But suffice it to say that we have some high caliber applicants, and we appreciate the process so far. We will have the interview process occurring at near the end of the month, November 22nd and 3rd, as I understand it. I want to commend a member of our staff, Jared Sigmund, on a follow-up to something he's been doing. First of all, the Smyrna Technology Group is an up-and-coming force to be reckoned with, thanks to the leadership of that one individual on our team, and a focus of the city of Smyrna trying to increase our visibility in the technology job creation aspect of Smyrna. And there is a company that we toured last week, a few of us at, as a result of just that happenstance walk-in of an individual to the Smyrna Technology Group, and that gentleman's name is Winston Johnson. His company is called Mandy Media, M-A-A-N-D-I, the initial stand for something, I won't bore you with that, but his office is over on Lake Park in a facility once occupied by Lockheed, which has a tremendous nerve center, has a power and, and high, high, what's the word I'm looking for? It's, it's better than a T-1 line in terms of access to the pipe, the media. Okay, what was that? It's, it's got the, the most capacity of any, it's got high bandwidth. Now, let me tell you, this company is Hollywood, right here in Georgia. They have 100, about 100 employees now, but they have the capacity to increase that to 700 at that facility, as I understand it. They do an awful lot of the audio and some video renditions of popular films, something you've seen, every one of you have seen work that this crew has worked on. Winston Johnson is just a media genius. He's worked on everything that you can imagine in the last 20 years, working with Quincy Davis, Michael Jackson, Stevie Wonder, all the way through to popular films of the day currently. He's working on a project with a major film star that you all know, and it's all being done right here in Smyrna, Georgia, where the finished product that goes to production has to come through this facility here in Smyrna. It's a remarkable, remarkable thing. You're going to hear more about this as the days go by. You're going to hear more about this as the days go by. I also want to commend the Bennett Woods neighborhood for persistence on getting their no solicitate, there's no soliciting signs up. Allegra Goodman has been bird dogging this for quite some time, getting the specs right, getting those signs up, working with Scott Stokes, and we appreciate that. Those are up, and we're pleased to announce that. This Saturday, Bennett Woods Chili Cook-Off, always a fall tradition and a great neighborhood gathering opportunity in Bennett Woods, and once again, I'm, I'm proud to have been invited to be a part of that. This Saturday, I will be at Oak Hills HOA, Justoff Fontaine. They all have their annual meeting, and I'm, I'm pleased to be able to join them. I will, for those who are curious and you see construction underway on South Cobb Drive at the Silver Comet Parkway, or as some people call it, the East-West Connector, that construction underway that you see right next to Jim and Nick's is the new Krispy Kreme, which will be open in springtime, if not sooner. So Max has got his frequent diner card ready to go, so just be ready to welcome them. We're going to welcome them into the community, and hopefully, the rest of that corner, we'll start seeing some, some activity fairly soon. Just as a final reminder, as we are getting closer to this Jamestown River View landing application, this Thursday at lunch, the Smyrna Business Association at the community center, it is a, a lunch event, so there is a modest cost. You can go to smyrnabusiness.org and get your tickets in advance. Friday morning is the Smyrna Optimist, smyrnoptimus.org, you can find out how to be a part of that as a breakfast meeting. And then on Thursday night, November 14th, at Whitfield Academy, is my town hall meeting on Jamestown. We'll have staff and, and the developer there to answer whatever questions might be raised by the public as we get closer for November 18th for the public hearing and full consideration by council. With that, Mayor, I yield.
Mr. Eric Taylor.
No report.
Scott Cochran. Terry Graham. Nothing else? Thought for sure Ron had mentioned the great job the police department did on Halloween, Halloween night.
I should do that.
Yeah, it don't take five minutes, but just go ahead.
Chief Lee and the entire Smyrna Police Department spent time riding around on Halloween through all of our neighborhoods, accompanying the young people who were trick-or-treating and the families that trod behind them to try to carry things. It was well-received. The folks were most appreciative, and the police department, with its outreach, did a fabulous job. Congratulations, and thank you, and I apologize for overlooking that.
I mean, I had more trick-or-treaters this year than I've ever had. Less candy for me. Yep. 10, the showcross hearing we have, don't have anything, citizen's input, we have two people signed up. Alec Bakri, 3459 Choney Trail. This topic is comments.
My comments tonight are for you, Mayor, and the, yes, council. Mayor, you had a guest speaker two weeks ago at a special interest group, invitation-only at the community center. To take the time for the special interest group to answer questions and where Smyrna's going and take questions, it's been how many years since we've been asking you for us to have a town hall meeting for the taxpayers of Smyrna? I don't understand, when you have these special interest groups and have the time to do those, that you don't do a town hall meeting that we have asked for, from quite a few years now. The last town hall meeting, three years ago, we only had 15 minutes to answer questions, ask questions, and supposedly would get the answers for the people that weren't covered in the mail. I'm still waiting three years from that. So that was pretty much a waste of time. But again, you promised two years ago you would have a town hall meeting, and I truly don't understand why, that you owe to me and many people in this city, why we don't have town hall meetings. And just as a sidebar to that for a moment, I hope the people in Marietta have learned from Smyrna losing millions on these apartment purchases and vote no tomorrow. That's going to be an interesting vote. Again, we're in a recession, and I don't believe government should be in private enterprise. And I hope at least they've had memorandum, town hall meetings or referendums on it, so the people are involved. Unfortunately, we had neither on the Smyrna Commons and Hickory Lakes. But I'd like to ask you, Mayor, in the time I've got remaining, if you could please answer why, or if there is any future plans for you to have a town hall meeting where we can ask you questions along with the council, which is so important for communications, like many of the other mayors and the other counties do, when you may be able to have a town hall meeting? For us, if special interest groups can get you to have the time, I think we deserve the time. And I'd like to ask you if you have any plans on that.
Thank you for your comments. Thank you for your comments.
I have 14 seconds left.
Second speaker is Larissa Edwards.
I have 14 seconds left for you to answer.
This, we've told you every meeting, this is not a question and answer period. You know, and it's not a question and answer period. I'm not going to get into it with you. Thank you very much. Larissa Edwards, 304 Hickory Springs, unethical city practices.
Mr. Mayor, you lied to me at the last meeting when I asked you if you were going to have a meeting, you and Terry both. Do you remember that? I'm going to take it that you do remember that. Now, normally, when I come up here, I'm pretty happy, and I'm smiling, and I'm nice. The fact of the matter is, Mr. Mayor, I don't have to be nice. So today, I'm going to give you a little lesson in math, and I don't want you to take it personally because it's math. I don't want anyone to take it personally. You can just add up things, you know what I mean? Mr. Mayor, this is Satan's formula. I showed it to you before. When you favor few over many, that's nowhere near God. This is math, okay? You don't even have to think about it. This is Max's formula, special interests over Smyrna. Now, side by side, few, few, I would say the Keller Group is a lot smaller than Smyrna, wouldn't you? Wouldn't you? Now, I don't know if you practice lying a lot, but a city leader should not lie to the residents. The residents don't even ask much. The truth is old. You're a city servant. You're not the king of Smyrna, but we all know that's what you believe. That's why you're a devil worshiper. You don't want to go down in history as a Satan's minion, do you? It's not fair. It's not attractive. It's not cute. And Smyrna city residents deserve more. If you can have a meeting for a special interest group, you can have a meeting for Smyrna. I heard you say the reason why you purchased Hickory Lakes. I heard a lot about what you guys do. Not once did I hear anything about what the city of Smyrna would like to see. Not once did I hear what's right, as opposed to what's not right. You have an obligation. As a matter of fact, you took an oath. And the oath says, "Never discriminate unfairly by dispensing of special favors or privileges to anyone, whether for remuneration or not, and never accept for himself or herself or his or her family favors or benefits under circumstances which might be construed by reasonable persons as influencing the performance of their governmental duties." You need to change your ways very soon, all of you.
Thank you for the comments. Thank you for comments.
Peacemaker for president.
Yeah. I've been up here for, I've been in office for 33 years. I've never had a Messiah come into this building before. That was the Messiah. I have probably attended hundreds of meetings in this community over the last 33 years, more than that probably. Somebody come up here and tell me that I'm a devil worshiper is a sick, sick, sick person. You're sick.
It's math, sir.
You're sick. And I'm not going to get into it with you. I'm not going to lower myself to your level. You come up here every meeting claiming that you're the Messiah. It's amazing. I declare, if no other business be brought forth by this body, I declare this meeting adjourned. It says 9:15, but I think it's really 8:15.